Call to order this meeting among the County Commission of May 3rd, 2017. For the record, please note that all the Commissioners are present. And I would like to see everybody's rise for his moment of silent meditation and then the pledge to the flag.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, Renetta. Consent and approval, please.
Morning, everyone.
Good morning.
We have three exonerations this morning for $4,0053191. Minutes to approve. Board of Equalization Review for October 11th, 17th, and 20th. Regular and work session for March 8th, March 15th, March 22nd, March 29th, April 5th, 12th, 19th, and 26th, and a special work session on March 16th, and 24th, and April 18th. General County vouchers for $67,027.89, 911-97602, Chestnut Ridge Park, $1,861.54, Kent Muffley, $35.70.57, Mason Dixon Park, $34.93.22, Recreation Levy, $196.96. Purchasing card vouchers, General County, $16,0231.66, Magistrate Court, $26.36, 911-361.85, Home Confinement, $78.20.36, Chestnut Ridge Park, $261.78, Kent Muffley, $1,874.96, Mason Dixon Park, $227.70, Recreation Levy, $105.57, Assessor's valuation, $153.18, for a total of $104.189.62. No budget revisions to approve. The Board of Zoning Appeals for the Western Planning District, vacancy. Planning Commission, Region 6, Planning and Development Council, and the Mon County Historic Landmarks Commission, judiciary orders for May 3rd, 2017.
Mr. President, I have several motions. First, I move that the minutes be approved for the Board of Equalization and Review, the regular minutes, and the special work session.
Okay.
Second?
It's been properly moved in second to approve those named. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Then I move that we table the work session minutes.
I'll second that.
Is that just one? I'm sorry.
No, all of them. I'm sorry, all at this time, yeah.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
And then I move that we approve all other mentioned comments.
Okay. It's been properly moved in second to approve everything else, excluding those. All in favor? Second, I'm sorry.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any other motion?
No.
Okay. Introduction of new employees and personnel changes. Whom do we have? If you'll stand up, identify yourself.
My name is Stephen Fitz. I'm with the Prosecutor's Office. Perry would love to be here to introduce our new employee. She is unfortunately in court right now. Our newest employee is Jesse Viola. She is an Administrator Assistant, and she just started working with us Monday.
Welcome.
Thank you very much.
Move for approval?
Second.
It's been properly moved in second for approval. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Hope you're not busy.
Yes. We're happy, I understand. We're happy to have you. Okay.
Hi, I'm Sarah. I'm the Director of the Mon County Area Report Center. I have with me today Michael Roman. With your approval, we would like to hire him on a part-time basis. He would be, his title would be an Assistant Case Manager.
Thank you. Move for approval?
Second.
It's been properly moved in second for approval. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Welcome, Michael. Happy to have you.
And we really hope you're not busy.
Any other need?
That's quite all right. That's all right, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you all. Next, we have comments from the public. We will open. Comments from the public. No one rising to speak. Comments from the public are now closed. Okay? Colleen, grants.
I do not have any grants for you this week.
Okay. Colleen, you're setting me on a track record here, okay?
We'll slow it down.
I have to beat 11 minutes however, all right? I don't think so. All right. Next, we have the opening for the bids for the Courthouse Square project.
How many totals do we have?
Great.
Okay, don't forget there's two envelopes. Envelope one and two.
Yeah, well, let me make sure.
It's envelope two.
Which one are we allowed, just one?
One.
One right now.
Right.
I have envelope number one, yes.
Let me give this to each of you. This is kind of our checklist for bid one for envelope one. So we need to kind of make sure all those items are in there. And I'll give each of you.
Thank you, Michael.
And then the second page has what should be in envelope number two.
All right.
Just wondering why we're being provided ice.
That's why you have a weapon in front of you, yes. Okay, we'll open envelope number one.
Yes, they do need, the first one is, is it Waller, W-A-L-L-E-R Corporation, DBA, Waller Corporation, Box 757, Washington, PA? And they do meet all the requirements in envelope one. And just to verify, I can say that they have, they've done the Ogilvy Resort, they've done a courtyard Marriott Hotel that we requested, they've also worked on school systems, and they do have their certificate of liability insurance.
Same being said for March Weston Company. Their light projects are the W Health Science Center, Cafe, and the Patio, Dominion Transmission Headquarters, the Hardscapes, and the Patio area, and University Park at Evansdale, Hardscape, and Quad.
Case, Veritas Contracting LLC. They have their contractor's license, proof of insurance. Similar projects, Greta Bridgeport Convention and Visitors Bureau, Clarksburg Federal Credit Union, Fairmont Brine Processing, Hope Shelter Build Out, Pro Performance, RX Pierpont Location Build Out, North Marion High School Athletic Complex, Fairmont State University, Feaster Center and Auditorium renovation, Protea Biosciences Group, their fifth-floor laboratory, Louis Upser Vietnam Museum, Clear Mountain Bank, Suncrest Branch, Fairmont Puppet Works Warehouse, Mountaintop Medical Center, Fairmont State University Ruth and Music Library, and Liberty High School, and Stockmeyer Erethanes Warehouse Edition. So they appear to have the required proof of past performance.
Go ahead and open the second envelope, please.
Was there also a bid and a, were they all just one bid or not? Okay, I didn't know, because we had talked at one time. Okay, the base bid price for Waller is $2,248,000.
March Weston is $2,123,306.35. I like the 35 cents.
I know.
I'm sorry.
And the bid for Veritas is $2,137,985.
They're all pretty close.
Yes. Well, that's good. I mean, actually, it shows that the individuals have paid attention to what Mr. Doyle has given them.
Yeah.
Usually, these are given for review to Mr. Doyle before we take an action on them.
Exactly.
Can I have a motion to that effect, if that's your pleasure?
So move that we have them reviewed by Mr. Doyle, Mr. Miller, and?
And Mr. Mills.
Mr. Wilson. And then return, come back to us with a recommendation.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second to hand these to Mr. Doyle for review. All in, Mr. and Mr. Mills jointly. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And I seem to have given you my agenda, okay? Thank you, sorry. All right. Really excited about this project, I think, and the fact that the bids are so close, I think, indicates that, you know, some really good attention was paid to detail, which is, I believe, a credit to Mr. Mills as well as Bobby Doyle. So thank you both. Correspondence?
Received the third quarter levy spending report from Bowport for their levy funds. Covers January 1st through March 31st. We received a letter from the Kanawha County Commission, signed by President Kent Carper, regarding Senate Joint Resolution 8. This is, this is where the, would you like me to read it?
Yes, please.
Kanawha County Commission has very serious concerns about the long-term damage to county governments that would occur if Senate Joint Resolution 8 passes in West Virginia. This so-called tax reform measure would in effect dissemble county government. The Kanawha County Assessor's Office has spent considerable time compiling key information on this bill. I for one would like to support the average taxpayer. However, on a $150,000 home, under this proposal, the tax increase would amount to a whopping $1,140. The gimmick is taking taxes off cars. However, for the average taxpayer, taxes will go up much more on their house than they could possibly save from not paying taxes on their cars. This bill needs to be fully explained to the public and in turn subjected to meaningful public input and debate. The most damaging thing about this resolution is the huge negative impact it will have on public safety due to the extensive loss of county funding. My county's loss of funds across the board is 38%. I have no doubt the authors of this are well-intentioned, but this resolution has not been fully vetted or researched. At this point, it is up to local officials to create a meaningful dialogue describing what these devastating cuts in local funds will mean to every county in the state. Kanawha County Commission requests that you please share the attached information, which includes your specific county's financial losses due to Senate Joint Resolution 8 with your county's delegates and senators. If you have any questions regarding this information, please contact our legislative liaison, Carrie Hill, or contact the County Commission, President Kent Carper. And they have taken, they have given us a spreadsheet based on the 2016 assessments and levy rates, and they're estimating that we would lose $5,217,764.62.
Since, did we want to discuss it on a work session because, or do we want to support this? I mean, I don't want to follow, I just wonder how you would like to do that.
I'm fine with going ahead.
I would like to support, you know, Kanawha County, and very concerned about the loss that we would assume in this change of tax structure.
Are you wanting to set up a meeting with our delegates and senators to discuss this, or?
I don't think that would be out of the order, to be honest with you.
I think we could send, yeah.
It's a great concern.
Right. How about we send a letter, say that we are in support, and then we would also ask to try and set up a meeting?
Are you putting that in the form of a motion?
Yes, I'd say move that we send a letter to Kanawha County and also try and set up a meeting with our delegates to voice this concern.
Second with discussion.
Yeah.
I actually talked to the assessor last week, and he brought this up also, so you might certainly want Mark to be involved in that conversation.
In the tax office, in the sheriff.
Yeah, and the sheriff.
And the sheriff, yes. All right, it's been properly moved in second to support this resolution and to invite our delegates in and our senators in. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Any other correspondence?
No.
Okay. New business?
Unfinished business.
Unfinished business. Do we have unfinished business?
No.
Oh, okay, sorry. We usually don't. All right, new business.
Okay. We received a request by Bill Austin, who's the Executive Director of the Morgantown-Monogatia MPO. He's requesting that the funds approved for fiscal year 18 in the amount of $17,500 be released to them early. There has been a major delay in reimbursements from the West Virginia Department of Highways, and he needs that money to catch up on some payments with his consultants that are way past due, being paid. So this will be a one-time release of funds.
I'd move for approval.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second for approval of release of these funds early. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next.
Consideration of appointments to the Mon County Local Emergency Planning Committee. We've received several applications. These appointments are for three years. We have Robert Ashcraft. He's the Safety Coordinator for Monotight County Schools. Dave Custer, he's an Industrial Hygienist, and I believe he's on the Solid Waste Secretary.
Yes, yes, yes.
Morning, Ms.
First, we're Dave's.
Gerald Simkonis, S-I-M-K-O-N-I-S. He's an Emergency Response Program Manager. Michelle Lewis, who is a social worker therapist from here in Morgantown. Erv Schutzner, I believe he is retired from the Board of Education?
Yes.
Okay. He sits on the MPO, well, he, yeah, he sits on the Technical Advisory Committee for the MPO, and has been on the Mountain Line Bus Board of Directors, I believe. Edward Abbott, this says he's the Director of Moni MS.
I think he used to be. I don't understand, I think Dave's in charge of UNIS.
But thank you.
Okay. We may table this one, maybe he won't, he's not even working, is he still working there?
It changed a month ago.
He might want to table that one, until we find out if he even still is interested. Sheriff Perry Palmer, Lee Smith from the Health Department, Mike Fortney from Emergency Management, Randy Williams, who is the Mon County Health Department Threat Preparedness Coordinator, and of course Jimmy Smith, Maxine Cantus, she's a patient and environmental safety coordinator for Mon General Hospital. Dr. Brooks Againer is obviously a physician.
Yes.
And that's all we have.
Okay, there are sufficient.
Qualifications.
Opening, oh no, openings for, okay.
Were there plenty open?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So we're not having to pick and choose, is what I'm asking.
A lot of these are reappointments also.
Yes, okay.
I move that the following names be appointed.
Do you want to table this?
Tableting.
With tabling that one, until we?
Mr. Abbott.
Talk with him.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved in second to approve these appointments. Save one. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, consideration of request by Sheriff Perry Palmer to allow the tax office to collect taxes with discrepancies under an amount to be determined by the Commission.
Okay.
So move with explanation.
Yes, let's, let's have a short explanation after the.
Second with discussion.
Here. Sheriff Palmer, if you would, please.
Good morning. Kelly and I have talked about this. I think she would be more appropriate to explain to you exactly what's going on.
That's fine.
Good morning.
Good morning, Kelly.
We are finding that more and more of our payments are being sent in at an incorrect rate, which then we have to turn around and send them back because the system does not allow us to collect an improper amount. I did a little research, and last year, or to date, I should say, since August 1st, we've sent over 1,500 payments back. And then what happens with that, if we did, we went back a few years of research, and a lot of the properties that go for sale at our tax sale, or at least they get that first initial letter, is because we've done a return letter, and people are not opening their mail. We're returning their payment back to them, they're not opening it, I guess they're not balancing their checkbook to realize that the money never came out of their account, and then we're sending, we're turning around, spending money to send them a certified letter to let them know that they didn't pay their taxes. So we are suggesting $3 over or under. I did a survey around the state. Most are anywhere between $1 and $5. And a lot of those that are 1 and 2 right now are, they're going to raise theirs to the 3, because the average in the office was $2.22. So we figure if we set it at $3 over or under, then that would capture all of those payments.
Let's just go ahead and have a motion to that effect.
Yeah, well, we have a motion, but I'd move to amend it so that it would be $3 over or under.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved in second. This is a cost-saving item.
Yes.
Just so the public knows, that we're just trying to, we're not trying to take or make up money, it's just simply the amount of money that's spent on the expenditure to try and recover somebody that has made an error, and I myself have made an error. So being that, we're just making a clean sweep of this, okay?
And I did want to say that if anybody ever has a question about how much they owe, you know, our telephone number's on the bill, we can give them the exact amount.
It's been properly moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And lastly.
Consider funding up to $1,000 to offset costs incurred by the, at the Mon County Ballpark for staff and cleanup for the University-High Morgantown High baseball game.
Well, I'd like to make the motion, and I want to have some discussion regarding.
Second.
All right, it's been properly moved in second for discussion.
Just to explain to the public, how this came about is about a month ago, we had a meeting with, there's a committee that's supposed to look into the scheduling of the stadium, to consider, you know, the Black Bears, W's use of it, and then the county. And we have an agreement with the university where they pay us $25,000 a year, and when that agreement was struck, I wasn't here then, but the spirit of that was that we would use that money to offset the cost to have community events at the ballpark. So we had a meeting about a month ago, we had our regular, my first, I was appointed by the Commission to be the liaison for that group, and we had a meeting Friday, and we went through the whole schedule, and I noticed that Wednesday, today, University-High and Morgantown High play at the ballpark. The ADs had basically gone out and negotiated that deal. So I thought it'd be a good idea, this is a good example, and a good way to start putting the word out that, you know, we want to have community events at the ballpark, and we have a vehicle that local organizations can do that. So I contacted the school board after the meeting and asked them if they wanted me to propose that, or if they wanted to put forth a proposal so that we can get it on the agenda that we cover this game. The costs are expected to be 700, and there is a cost associated with running something at the ballfield. They have to have the personnel for, you don't have to do concessions, but they'll have concessions, they have security, cleanup. Cleanup's probably the biggest deal, the more people that show up, the more cleanup. So we agreed to put it at not to exceed $1,000, and that's what this is for. I contacted the school board, Dr. D'Vona was on vacation, but Sandy DeValt, and Adam Henkins got back to me and said they would appreciate it. So they sent me an email asking for the request.
Yeah, I think this is the first time we're actually doing this, and I think that's because Sean has got back on the committee, and we're, you know, reviewing the situation. I agree, we have a certain amount of money, and we want to continue doing this, and I think it's a great community project. I also want to thank Matt Dreher. We also have now a calendar, which we've been requesting, that shows all the events that are going on, and that also gives us the opportunity that if there's some future community events that we want to do there, we'll have a calendar to look at it. And we'll pass that on to Sean to take that. But I think it's a great idea, Sean, I strongly support this.
Totally unrelated, I was at this Saturday at the Granville Softball League, they had their grand opening. It got rained out, but they still had pitchers, and Don Robson, President of MVB, walked up to me and says, "By the way, who does the scheduling at the stadium?" I said, "Which stadium?" "It's the ballpark."
Yeah.
I said, "Well, that's funny you ask." I said, I asked him why, because I thought maybe he heard about the ballgame. And he said, "No, I was just wondering, like, in spring it'd be great for, like, to kick off if all the local teams, like, pick a day and, you know, have, they each get to play at the, you know, do a round robin or something." I said, "Don, that's a perfect idea," and then I explained to him this process, and I said, "I just, when you have those ideas, bring them to us."
And the game is tonight at 5:00.
5:00.
Just so, yes.
All right. Hearing, no further discussion. All in favor of this proposal?
Aye.
Thank you. It is exciting, you know, we have such a wonderful vehicle there to be used, and I think the community participation's going to be great on that. Any other new business? Hearing none, we'll move to reports from elected officials.
Mike, even though not an official, I would still like to hear your report.
I'd asked him if he wanted to, to talk about the imagery.
Yeah, absolutely. On Friday, Blue Mountain delivered the 2017 imagery to us. And we are now in the process of trying to get that to Atlas, our contractor for the GIS website. So they'll implement that into the actual web parcel viewer and get that up on the newassessor.org website. I don't know if anybody's been to the assessor's new website, it's very nice, and they have a link on that directly to the Monogatia County Parcel Viewer GIS website. So I actually have an imagery example out here where we've come since 2010, when we first did aerial imagery in the county. So I have, like, a little side-by-side, I can set up on the table for you if you'd like after the meeting.
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, so it's 2010, 2015, 2017, and, you know, I just did, like, the ballpark area to show you exactly how much development's going on in that section of Monogatia County. So, but yeah, so I'm hoping when Atlas comes up here for the Assessors Conference, I think it's next week, they're going to get ahold of that data and then get it on the website as soon as they can. And it'll be available to the public within the next week or two.
Good. And we're still going to continue on a two-year basis?
That's correct.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Do you want to present that, or?
Oh, yes, absolutely. Grab it.
Yeah, while, while the camera's on, let's at least let the public know what things look like in that area.
What we spend our money on so people can.
Well.
Facing ours.
Facing it.
Face it to the camera.
To the camera, please.
Then we'll look at it, if you could just show.
I don't, I don't mind being blocked, okay?
There we go. So we have 2010, 2015, 2017, all in the exact same zoomed-in ratio, and it just has Morgantown Mall right here, and then we have, of course, University Town Center with the ballpark and everything, obviously the development that's going on, so.
So you can see the major development that has been going on there, and will continue.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you, really appreciate that.
Any other reports from elected officials? Hearing none, we'll move to reports from county commissioners. Sean?
It's been a busy week, starting with last Thursday, had a number of meetings. We had our Development Authority meeting, that was the one where Ms. Childs announced that she would be moving over to another business, and now we have a whole, well, it's really a hole in the map side, because their director serves as the Director of the Development Authority, but it's something we're looking into. Thursday night, I, it's in my neighborhood, it's right across the street, I always attend the Suncrest Neighborhood Estatuation Meetings, and it was a small group, I think everybody's kind of wore out from the, from the election. But I did find out a couple things, and, you know, a couple things I was able to help. Example is over by Suncrest Middle, there's a sidewalk that, by the Hobachy Building, that's in bad need of repair, and it's actually supposed to be, it's supposed to be repaired by the owner, and this, the city is willing to take that project on if they just needed, they needed to get it back on the public's agenda and have somebody request that, and they thought it'd be a good idea if the school board would, because the school board is currently replacing the other part of the sidewalk in front of the school. So I contacted the school board, and they would be agreeable to do that, so they'll help force that process along. And there were some other things in regards to the new schools, a few construction things they still need to do. they still need to do. Friday, I had my, as I discussed earlier, the ballpark scheduling meeting, and I, I thought it was pretty productive, and I look forward to, I'm going to get involved earlier next year before the whole schedule comes up. What we decided, or what we talked about on Friday was what already is, with W's schedule and the Black Bear's schedule, but getting involved earlier, and if we have dates that we might want to put out there, you know, I'll have more involvement earlier, so. I did have, Monday, I got, got involved in a road issue. Monday, I had a call from the secretary at St. Francis, and they were telling me that they were having a real problem with the work that's being done on South University. And, see, St. Francis, they, there's only about 12 kids that take the bus, so 90% of the kids have to go up there by personal vehicle. There's about 410 students, it's about 260 families. So they drive up that hill, go around the loop, and come right back down, so really kind of double that. You've got about 520 exits. So with the construction going on, there was a real bottleneck. I mean, kids had to get out of their cars at the bottom of the hill and walk up to the school, because they just, nobody can move, they were landlocked, because everybody coming in from work off the Grafton Road, it was just a real mess. So it really was a traffic issue, you know, control issue. So I called, I met Foud, Foud Shokli, at one of the DOH meetings, and he said if I ever need anything, and he's a traffic control guy, so I called him and asked him if he could look into it. And I also sent Sheriff Palmer a message, because I thought it was Morgantown, but I just asked for him as advice, and Perry did respond, hey, tell them to change the time on the, on the, on the light. So I called Foud, he offered to drive up that afternoon, observe the traffic, see what he can do, talk to the contractors, and then he said he would also go there the next day. Today, I got a call, well, that Tuesday, I got, in the afternoon, I got an email from St. Francis saying, "I don't know what happened, but it's better." And then today, it was like, the problems were nonexistent. So just a few tweaking and working with the DOH, it, it really worked out well. And Tom, I know you were involved with it also.
Yeah, I called, and they had told me that you had already called, and Foud was, was exceptional, you know, he realized there was some problems there. I also called Perry and made the same suggestions, and added one where some people said, "I guess coming up, you had to make a left turn, and you had to go through five lanes, and there was no left turn blinker." So the cars were shooting out in between. Also, as I said, some of the people, parents were getting upset and letting their kids out, and we were very worried as they were walking along. But no, I, I really...
Safety issue.
Yeah, so I appreciate, yeah, and they were very amenable. I, I agree with you.
And that's all I had, I'll go ahead and lead into you then.
No, no, I was really pleased. The other thing that I, I did not know till I was leaving about 5:00, heading the other direction, and that's why I might need to call Foud, but it's probably resolved now, is getting off the interstate, they were backed up all the way down, so I was very concerned, they're backed all, all the way to the 79-68 interchange, and you're going 70 miles an hour, so that had to be resolved. So I believe that will take care of it, and I appreciate it. I think that people were exceptionally pleased that the county commissioners were involved and resolved, you know, took that issue. I happened to attend the CVB meeting, as you said, I like the word, very productive, there's some major changes. One of the suggestions we're also doing is this, with this interactive website we recommended, that once they get it, all the cities and counties have a link, so everyone has the same website and so on. Also, they are going through the finances, and I'd asked, we'll, we'll discuss that during the administrative reports about a couple of things. I would like, since you had brought that up, I would like to move that we send a letter of appreciation to Ray Urs, who retired.
Certainly. Is it second?
Second. I, I, I agree wholeheartedly. I mean, Ray has been responsive to all the calls that we have made, so properly moved in second to send that letter of appreciation. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Yeah, he has been wonderful, and I know people get concerned, but he has been the, the go-to guy for the three of us, and I just look forward to meeting the new individual, and I hope that, you know, I've not met him yet, but Ray Urs has really done a lot of things for Mon County, so I just want to make sure he, he gets that. Also, I'd also like, somehow, we send a invitation email to all the new city council members to invite them to, and put on the agenda, introduction for the leadership forum on May 10. I think that would be a great way to...
I contacted Linda on Friday.
Oh, great.
Her email address.
So we have now sent an invitation, so I just wanted to know that, because I think it would be a good time. I really want to move and use that forum. I think now, with changes, we'll be able to make it even more productive. I like that word.
Who's hosting the next forum?
We are.
We are, okay.
So we'll be able to show off the new...
Yes.
Yes.
Plenty of room.
May the 10th, 6:00.
May the, yes, okay, and that is it.
I'll try and make a couple minutes before my planning commission meeting.
Because you are giving the welcome.
Yes, I'm sorry. I have a planning commission meeting that we, that night, I know that it's difficult sometimes. We have a good problem that was communicated to me by Becca Fenn Clark, in that so many individuals have signed up to go to Younger Camp, that it was really fortuitous that Mr. Doyle and his crew have readied an additional cabin for the anticipated 175 campers, plus 30 counselors that are going to be present at 4-H Camp for Younger Camp. That is getting near, I, I admit, when I was young and I was camping, there were 200, but the health and safety regulations were different in those days. We did jam, just so you know, we put 32 individuals inside of Clinton Cabin and eight out on the porch, okay? So for a total of 40 in that small cabin, which totals, I think, 20 by 24. We can't do that now, yes, but that, that is a nice problem, and really, would you care to comment on the project? I believe it's done, isn't it?
It's done, yeah, all the new wiring's in, it's all fixed up, just waiting on events.
Good. We're really, we're really happy about that, and thank you for it. I believe also there's one other event that's coming up. There is a, just so people know, I believe on Sunday, there is a dinner, yes, at Daybrook, a baked steak dinner. I think this is working toward the Fair Board, in support of the Fair Board. So if you're interested in a really great baked steak, I can assure you, all the baked steak dinners in the western part of the county are excellent. So, thank you. Is there anything else?
Move for adjourn?
Second.
We are adjourned, thank you.